Good morning.
Good morning.
Call the meeting to order. Ms. Weston, would you pray for us this morning?
Do my best.
All right.
I'm going to make you think this early in the morning, too. Lord, please watch over all of us today as we try to do the college's business. Please watch over each of these individuals who work so hard for us and all our students and their families. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Resolutions. Mr. Chairman, there were no resolutions, but I would like to take a moment of privilege to do a recognition if we could. I would like Vice President Williams and Mark Strickland, our Athletic Director, to come forward and introduce our coach with some announcements. Coach, please join us.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Law, members of the board. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I stand before you with much pride and I'm just very excited. I love athletics, you guys know that. The work that Mark Strickland has done this year has been stellar. Our teams are truly student athletes. Over 50% of our students have about a 3.0 GPA or higher. And so, we want to honor one of our coaches who was recognized a few weeks back. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Strickland to come up and share that information.
Good morning, Dr. Law, members of the board. For those of you that don't know, this is Coach Ernest Crumbly. He's our men's basketball coach. He's been with us for 16 years. He has been an awesome asset to the college, not only in wins and losses and championships. For those of you that don't know, he won a championship back in 2002. And he was a state runner-up this year at the state tournament. But also, he's a champion in life in what he has done for our men at this college. He stands for everything that we believe in here at the college. And even though he came up just a little bit short this year, we still wanted to recognize him, not only for the year that he had and his team had, but also what some of you have come to learn. He's also recently been elected as a Hall of Famer in the Activity Association in the state of Florida. And so, with that being said, Dr. Law said, "Let's bring him in here. Let's recognize him and let's applaud him for this awesome accomplishment."
Here, here. Let me begin off by saying I know my God is good to me always and he leads me. But on behalf of the college, I want to thank the leadership for allowing me to work here daily and to probably do my ministry with young men on the basketball court, which we call our classroom. But in all honesty, this has been a labor of love. It's not work to me. I would do it for free. I tell my players that. But unfortunately, the college pays me. So, I keep that in mind. But really, thank you guys for the opportunity, Dr. Law, just to work here at this institution is a great honor to me. I am humbled to the fact that I know that it could be somebody else. But I want to thank each and every one of you for that. It's been a long journey. The God's been good for me. They keep me young. And hopefully, we have another couple of runs in us again so we can actually win the championship at the end. We thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coach Crumbly. Do you have any more comments?
The only comment I have, 16 years.
Yes, sir.
Did I hear that right?
Yeah.
You start coaching when you were 12?
Right. Player coach.
Congratulations. I mean, that is a great accomplishment.
Thank you, sir.
Any more board member comments?
Just thanks.
Coach Crumbly, let me say this. I've known you a long time and you have helped mold and shape a lot of young men into being just that, men. And they come to you as boys a lot of times and you help get them to a point where I don't think anybody else can. And you've been doing that a long time in this community, not just on the basketball court, but in the classroom as well. We appreciate you and all you've done for this college. I think you've gotten to the point where Dr. Law always talks about, when we talk about sports, I was a student athlete. You know, you say student athlete, but they really mean athlete.
Yeah.
But here at St. Pete College, we can say with pride that you and Coach D- Dinesha Davis have gotten us to a point where our students are also athletes. And that's what's most important. When you're graduating students and you're doing the stuff that you're doing, then we're doing it right. And we appreciate you for doing it right and we thank you, not only from the college, but from the community. And, you know, Dr. Law, I think next year, we need to be trying to figure out how to give them some more money in their budgets so they can, so we can drive that home, maybe study hall and some other stuff. I don't know, whatever they want to do to continue to make them student athletes. But when they do things right, I know that you have rewarded folks for doing things the right way. And as a college, we should continue to do that. But thank you for helping us because, you know, really, that's what happens. It gets lost sometimes. People get lost and get mired and get so caught up in winning that they forget that these young men and women have to live life afterwards. And you didn't forget that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Coach, congratulations.
No, that was good. Okay, so we are, that's it. Oh, no, we got, is there any public speakers? There are none today? Okay. I'm going to go around the horn. Are there any folks on the board that have any comments this month?
No, sir.
Nope, none? All right, Dr. Law.
First of all, let me say thank you to everybody who was part of the recognition ceremony, the Midtown Ceremony. It's really one of the great days. So, we're very, very pleased that that project, in fact, before the meeting, we were showing some photos and the progress continues. You have the GMP on the agenda for today. Second of all, the legislature continues to meet. I'll have some more comments toward the end of the meeting, just to update you on that. I'll leave today to go back up to Tallahassee because Ed Woodruff continues to represent us. Couple of vexing issues, as always, and we'll see that. And then, thirdly, let me take a second. Ms. Gardner, our college attorney, will be making a report a little bit later, but before I give up the microphone, let me indicate that she has been nominated for a Top Corporate Counsel Award by one of the prestige online journals here in the Tampa Bay area. And that recognition ceremony will take place next Tuesday, I think, if I have it right, March 25th. So, we're delighted on a variety of fronts.
She's not only nominated, she's a finalist.
Finalist, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Thank you, sir.
I'll step back, but I would like to applaud anybody that was also, I would echo what Dr. Law said about the Midtown. There was a great celebration. We're finally on our way. There has been much progress made. The footer and a couple of other things have already been done. I think Mr. Oliver took a...
I was over there last Wednesday and the elevator shafts are kind of pitted out. The walls are going up and the parking lot is in good order. So, things have moved right along.
And he says that, we know what's happening because he's the only one who knows construction. So, thank you again. And can I have a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting in February 18?
So moved.
Seconded.
Then properly moved and seconded, all signified by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll move on to the monthly reports. Our board attorney, Mr. Lang, how are you this morning?
I'm just fine.
Go Gators.
I don't know, well, I was going to ask you if you knew that they'd won, right?
Yeah.
I thought you did, of course. I think all's quiet in the western front. No reports, sir.
Look, we're not ashamed.
That will not appear in a minute.
Ms. Gardner, how are you? Congratulations.
Thank you very much and good morning.
Good morning.
You have a report this morning?
I do. You should be getting a memo in that regard. I would like to advise the board that we are in the process of amending our policies and procedures in regard to weapons and firearms on our campuses to comply with law and some current court decisions. There was a recent decision involving the University of North Florida and Florida Carey, a member organization that dealt with the interpretation of the statutes and the right to possess a concealed firearm in a public vehicle for defense purposes and other lawful purposes. And after the court reviewed the competing rights, the court found that the right to possess firearms safely in a vehicle could not be preempted by institutional policies. The college has been made aware of a complaint that was filed in early March against the college and the Board of Trustees by Florida Carey in Circuit Court, although this complaint has not yet been served. We're working with Mr. Lang, the Risk Management Consortium, and the assignment of outside counsel to resolve the issues that were brought up in this dispute. As part of this endeavor, we are looking at reviewing our student code of conduct. We're also looking at a second college procedure that would address not just students, but faculty, staff, and others on campus. And next month, we're going to be bringing two rule changes that deal with this issue and will bring us in compliance with the current state of the law and the recent court decisions.
Any questions or comments?
Any questions?
Ms. Gardner, I have one. I remember when this law was passed, it was a few years back, and there was much controversy about kids going to, young people going to high schools with gun racks and rural areas and they hunt and the whole nine yards. Could we require them to let us know that there is a concealed weapon in their vehicle? Can we do that? So, if they're on campus, we at least know that in that particular vehicle, there is a weapon.
There is a part of the statute that says we should not inquire.
Yeah. I just went through the Concealed Weapons License class, totally random, and this was a big topic of discussion. If they have a concealed weapons permit, we can't do anything about it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the, we have retained outside counsel.
That's correct.
That we believe is the Florida expert on this area to advise us in all the nuances. So, if you have questions and you would forward those to Suzanne, we'll try to incorporate everything in a singular response next month. Let's be sure we give you the service that you want. We want to comply with the law for sure. This would allow for firearms to be in a conveyance and that there are some nuances to what that means and how they have to be stored and that sort of thing. We will be in complete compliance with the law and the most recent court cases when we present to you next month. Just a matter, it's a moving target, quite frankly.
Ms. Suzanne, if I forget to email you later, although I tried to make a note, would you, in the previous cases that we talked about, would you just let me know, we previously talked about damages?
Okay.
Would you let me know what the previous damages were or if the settlements are public, what the settlements were?
I will get that information to you.
Thanks. I'll try to email, too.
We'll circulate the draft. As soon as we have what we think is a good draft, we'll get it in everybody's hands ASAP, okay? We're probably within, we're in pretty short order. We expect we'll have that in the next few working days, okay? We have not yet been served, though. I mean, I just want you to realize we're still kind of reading it in the newspaper. Some back channel communications.
Can we go to Pacer?
We're on our strategic, well, I just, before we leave this point, you know, Dr. Law, I'm glad we hired the counsel on this because, you know, we, if we don't know who has a weapon, we have no way of protecting the students that are on campus. And maybe that's something we need to talk to the rest of the presidents about, maybe saying something to the governor about it, you know? At least we can inquire, find a way that we can, that they have to register with us that they have the gun because we don't know, you know, when people snap and we have an obligation to protect the rest of the students, too, as well. So, well, you'll get back to us.
No, it has to come with visitors as well.
Yeah, I mean...
Casualty, we hold events on campus, people, we have lots, we're an open environment. So, you know, we have...
I believe in the First Amendment. I also believe in protecting the students on the campus.
You know we'll give the most protection to our students that we're capable of doing, Mr. Chairman.
We're down to strategic focus and planning.
Yeah.
Giselle.
We, let me take a second for, we have some new board members. You met in December, gave us some guidance as to areas of our strategic direction. We've confirmed those with you in January. We have now started the process with our staff to identify activities and budget requests that would fall into the areas in support of your earlier guidance. And this is an interim update for you as to the kinds of things we're seeing coming over the horizon. You're not being asked to vote on any of this today. It's a two-way, ask questions, give comments, more of this, less of that, whatever it might be. Jamel.
Good morning. Good morning. So, to give you a brief update as we're working through the strategic budget process, we've been looking at some of the big dollar items within our operating budget. Is that better?
I don't think it's your fault, Jamel.
Oh, okay. It's green. Can you hear me now better?
I can hear you fine.
We can hear you.
I just don't know if the people in the back can hear you.
Okay. So, working now?
Yeah. There you go.
Great, thank you. So, we've been looking at some of the big dollar items that are associated with expenses in our operating budget and wanted to walk through those with you. One of the big ones is utilities. We budget about $6 million a year in utilities, so we took a good look at that. Last year, we were under budget in that area by $700,000. And when we project to end this year, we think we're going to be about $600,000 under budget. So, we believe that with that bandwidth that we have, the utilities budget is stable. We're not going to need to add additional funding to that line item this year. Technology as well. Back when we started building our technology budget, we built a recurring budget into the operating system that allows us to refresh computers, leases, maintenance and license fees. So, again, we believe we've got enough money in there now and that that budget is stabilized as we move into the 14, 15 year. And then, when we look at compensation, health insurance, and the budget requests that we've received, I've got some slides to give some more detail on that. May I ask a question about technology? Sure. We just approved a new online and that's included within the stable? Well, some of that will be, we'll be reallocating money that had previously been budgeted for other types of technology. I remember. And then, there will be a portion that in essence would be kind of fund balance use of one-time money as we kind of get going over those first couple of years.
Let's take a second, though. It's a good question. Make sure everybody's get all the information. Over a period of time, the college now has a replacement schedule for its underlying technology that students touch, VLC and office technologies, all of those sorts of things. Part of that, then, is a scheduled replacement plan for technology. I think we use a four, five-year replacement cycle. For the first couple of years you do that, you have to add money to the cycle to get everybody on. We're now stable on that cycle, so that's paying for itself. So, that's in the Fund I operating budget. We have a replacement plan. We have, within one of the other budgets, the technology fee and we use part of that for the replacement. So, that's a non-Fund I budget. It's a pledged fee. And then, thirdly, the distance learning fee that we approved, that will be, it's in Fund I, but it's segregated as a course fee and we'll pledge it through into the budgets. So, candidly, I do think we have the technology on a sustainable, going-forward basis to keep what students would expect to be able to access and a replacement that gets old stuff moved on before it becomes more work than it's worth. I think we're in good shape on that one.
Got it. Sorry to interrupt.
And you can see the numbers, a good question. We're pretty proud of that work. It has taken us a while to get it to a stable state.
In the area of compensation, even though it's still early to make any recommendations related to compensation, wanted to show you the numbers behind what it would take in doing any type of compensation increases. So, as you can see here, for about every 1% of increase, it will cost about $1 million, just over $1 million. When we talk about health insurance in our operating budget, these are the costs that we actually, as a college, pay towards our health insurance plans. And what I wanted to show you here is at the top graph, it shows the monthly trends of our claims and it gives you a couple of years' worth. And I mostly just wanted to illustrate that you can see over the last couple of years, even though there's some variations by month, overall, that trend has not significantly gone up. So, and we believe that that's going to continue this year and next year. The bottom graph shows our fund reserve balance for insurance. And you can see to the left, last year in December, that balance was $8.2 million. Right now, we're at $9.4 million. So, we do have a healthy reserve in there. So, because of both of those things, we believe that what the college is putting forward right now to pay on the health insurance is enough and is stable as we move into the next year. And then, our strategic budget requests. On Thursday, March 6, we had the college-wide strategic budget request presentation day and all of the requests were linked to one of the initiatives that you all came forward with when we had our budget workshop back in December. And so, these are each of the different initiatives. And wanted to just put in there the kind of the overall dollar amounts that were associated with the requests that we did receive on those. And on the last one, the marketing campaign, Diana Sabino came forward last month and presented to you that overall plan. And the reason that one doesn't have a dollar amount in it right now is that is really a multi-dimensional plan that covers a lot of different areas. And we're working right now to see how much of our current dollars in the budget can be reallocated towards that plan and then how much are really new additional funds that we need to move forward with that. So, that'll be something we'll provide in an additional update. So, now that we've seen all of the budget requests for next year, what our next steps are is, over the next two weeks, all of the budget requests are prioritized and split out between whether they impact academic affairs, student support, or systems support. And there's a different committee for each one of those. So, the folks in each of those committees will now be meeting to prioritize their list of strategic requests. On March 31, then, those prioritized lists will be presented to the Strategic Issues Council and then an overall, one overall prioritized list will come forward out of that. And then, as in previous years, we don't tend to have the money to be able to fund all of the requests, but now we have a prioritization. And as we firm up the revenues that we're going to have for next year and also look at ways we may be able to reallocate funding, we'll be able to bring to you recommendations of which requests we'll be moving forward with and working towards those initiatives for next year. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if memory serves, and I'm leaving this afternoon to go back to Tallahassee, I think this week, we start seeing budgets from both House and Senate, if I'm not mistaken. I think they come out this week so we can really start getting then some indication of how much money will flow through to us. We remain in pretty good stead in the evolving discussions regarding performance. We still are on the upside. They've jimmied it around a little bit, not quite as strong as we had been, but still in the group that's on the upside on that one. So, we're seeing how that works. The team has not yet put to bed the final 3% enrollment growth plan. I have not signed off on that plan yet, but we will next month then bring to you what we believe is our first look at revenues, our first look at proposed expenditures, and see how the lists merge. Again, it's only April. We don't have to make final decisions. We can see how far off we are. When there's, Mr. Chairman, at the right moment, I don't know if we, what, if anything, we can do for staff, but that falls to me as a responsibility. The care and feeding of the employees is my job. And if I can find some revenue to do, albeit a modest compensation package, I'd like to take your temperature today. Is that going to be well-received by you if we can put something together to do that?
I would definitely be in favor of it.
You see what the numbers are. It's $1 million for every 1%. So, modest is the important word, the adjective term.
Can I ask for something else to be explored, though, as well? In addition to the 1% or 2% or whatever you want to look at, but also take a look at doing a, I'm going to call it a bonus because in corporate America, that's what we call it. I'm not sure what we call it in the nonprofit world, but like a one-time, non-recurring type bonus. My concern is anytime you add recurring money, it recurs. But I would just like an option or I would like to see an evaluation of that. Because if we don't know how we're going to be impacted by what's going on in Tallahassee and we don't know if we're going to get our 3%, I mean, we're going to try, but we don't know if we're going to get our 3% increase enrollment, I would rather use money we have that's not recurring than I would, you know, I mean, unless it's just, you know, we're living large, but I would just like it explored.
I'm with you. You know, and there's a time for all parts of the discussion. I worry a lot about the people at the entry-level steps, the people who are making $30,000, $40,000. They sit around the kitchen table and life looks a little different than it does for some of the rest of our staff. We need to take care of those folks as well. So, anything we can do for them, we'll do the best we can for them. But I am not opposed to making that recommendation. I'd like to do something that they can count on.
And I will go further and probably not make friends and influence people when I say this, but I wouldn't have a problem if there be a line in there as to some of our more entry-level folks seeing something and our upper-level folks not. I may need protection as I go to my car later today.
We've always done a little more for the people at the bottom. Let me help you. We have always, this college has a nice reputation of doing a little bit more for the people at the lowest entry steps as we put together a package. Let me, I just wanted to be sure if that's not going to be received, I needed to get that information today because I don't know where the money's coming from, but we're going to start playing with real money here in the next 30 days.
Other folks, go first.
The only other thing I would say, back to in corporate America, what gets measured gets done. And if we're getting funded based on performance, I would think that the pay should be increased or not based on performance and in line with what we're trying to accomplish from a funding perspective.
Dick Clark, you want to say something?
I agree. I'm in agreement.
I'm in agreement, too. And we've done that before, Ms. Weston, where we've given a one-year increase and then the next year, if we have dollars, we'd go back and say, "We'll do that." And there's been years where we haven't had the dollars and we haven't been able to do it. We've done it several different ways. So, I'm sure Dr. Law will bring us back. A lot of options relating to this one.
Can I ask when the last time there was an increase?
We did it last year. We did it last year.
Last year. What, 2.5%?
2.5%.
And then, when was the one prior to that?
That was a couple of years.
Yeah, it was a couple of years before.
Okay.
Yeah, and but I want to brag just a little bit. We have done a really good job with healthcare as well, though, so that this year, you got a 2.5% increase and no increase in either the deductible or the premium. So, it was a real, what, 2.5%? Nobody's going to get rich on that, but it was real money to you. We didn't take it back in the form of a healthcare increase or something, so.
Just to give some indication of, there were years where people didn't get anything. Doug, there was what, two or three years where we went without, it was three? Three years where we went without getting anything. And that was right as Dr. Law was entering, but we didn't, because we just didn't have it.
We'll bring up full package together. I just want to, didn't want to spend my time figuring it out and, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Giselle. Student achievement, and we've got Dr. Oliver and Dr. Crupp. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Law. We're excited to be here this morning to talk about career support for students, especially transitioning to, with internships and job preparation and job placement. As Dr. Law mentioned, the board at its strategic planning workshop in December had a lot of conversations about this topic and there was a great deal of interest in moving forward with the expansion and extension of career services. Dr. Law followed up, as he mentioned, with a memo to the board listing this as one of the strategic directions for the college for the coming year. This is the language that he used in that memo to expand and implement the college's career centers to strengthen, especially graduate placement, documentation of that placement, and job readiness. You can look at career services kind of as a three-fold process. Career exploration, when a student determines what it is that they want to do and where it is they're going. Career clarification and preparation after they've decided, getting ready, making sure that that's the right choice. And then, transition services, continuing their education or moving to a job. And as this quote from Franklin Marshall says, the literature and the approach that's being taken in career services, progressive career services operations these days is more transactional, rather than individual models helping students with specific tasks to looking over time to making sure that career services are part and parcel of what a student does throughout their career at the college. It's the integrated academic and career... It's the integrated academic and career advising writ large, especially on the career services side. We've done a stellar job on the career exploration piece. You've heard us talk about that over time, put some resources into this area so that we could help students early decide where it is they wanted to go. We determined that we needed a comprehensive advising program that connected both academic and career advising, that's the Integrated Academic Career Advising Program. When students came in, they were, in that initial interview session, they were given an instrument, they were asked about their career plans and their academic plans. Then they were classified as red, yellow, or green. Red, of course, being, they didn't have any idea where they wanted to go, and they didn't have any idea how to get there. Green being, they knew what their major was, and they knew where they wanted, as a career, and yellow in between. At that point, we, if we needed to, we instituted another career assessment tool that asked the students for their values, for their strengths, for their interests, for more intensive advising. And then those who were not classified as green, we set up a 16-week program as part of the semester-long process of moving a student along the path from red or yellow to green, to get them closer to making a decision. What we found as a result of that is clearly the students who were, had determined where they wanted to go and how they were going to get there, were much more likely to be successful. That's what you see in those bottom two charts. The success rates of green students, those who knew where they wanted to go and how they were going to get there, was over 75% for the fall term. That's the success rate, A, B, or C. And those who were retained, fall to spring, the success rate for green students was over 80%. Red students, 68%. So clearly, if a student knows where they want to go, they're going to do a much better job of getting there. So getting to green was a more, was a critical piece of what we were doing. We're also working at the same time in our career centers on the second aspect of career center work, after the student has decided where they're going, the focus shifts to career confirmation and preparation, so that they can gain a deeper understanding of their chosen occupation, what it's like through job shadowing, industry tours, use of software to further refine where they're going within a particular program, and to align that program with their career choice, using the learning plan and also the current job market statistics. And then preparation for students. We have a tool called Optimal Resume that the students can work through, their employability skills, understanding the occupation, doing simulated interviews, networking activities, participation in activities, and we're doing some of that, not as much as we should, but we're doing some of that, career preparation piece. That moves us to our third component, and Jason, if you'll take over at this point.
So this third component, transition services, as students are approaching graduation their last semester or two, they should be thinking of one of two things, employment or continuing my education towards another degree. So there are some pockets of assistance that we're providing in job placement currently, but what we don't have is a really proactive and aggressive approach to ensuring that students are using the resources and know how to use them as they're graduating. One example of this is the Employ Florida Marketplace. One of our partners here, the Workforce Board, WorkNet Pinellas, which is now Career Source, throughout the state, Employ Florida Marketplace is the tool, the website that's used, is a job board for all of the employment opportunities throughout the state. So that offers students a lot of opportunity to access information, and it also allows the workforce boards to track information for employment purposes. Currently, we have that website on the portal for students. They log into their My SPC account, and they see under My Career, they see Optimal Resume, they see Career Exploration, they also see Employ Florida Marketplace. So it's more of a passive approach at this point. If they find it and use it, it's there, or if a student comes to campus and asks for assistance, we provide it. But we want to be more intrusive, proactive, aggressive, similarly to the way we do the 16-week plan for career exploration, put a plan together for outreach as students are approaching graduation, so that they will use those effective job search strategies that they're learning in the prior phases of this service model. And on the continuing education side, if a student is approaching graduation, they should be not thinking about employment, or thinking about going on for a bachelor's degree at SPC, or transferring to someplace else, we want to ensure that they are equipped with the information, they know what the requirements are for admission. Legislation was passed, and this year, the students who started in fall are required to declare a major by 30 credit hours, and we are, our IT team's currently working on a system to be able to track what their major's going to be at the next level, whether it's at SPC, or if they're transferring, and what institution they're going to be going to. So by 30 credits, they are required to make that decision, and we will be monitoring that and putting together a plan to reach out to them and communicate. Okay, you've said you're going to this institution, the requirements are listed here, let's be sure that you're ready to make this transition. So we'll provide that support. We'll also, if they're transferring someplace else, bring in support from the transferring So those were the three areas, the three tiers in this process, and what you see here is really a simplified model. We know that students come to us with different levels of career exploration in their career exploration process. But this is, on the left side, you'll see that the arrows are the credit hours. So upfront, we're looking at career exploration. We're really focusing on making sure that they're making good decisions, based on who they are and the world of work. The middle tier is the clarification process, and then at the end of this, towards graduation, we look at the transition services. So again, a simplified model, there's going to be some crossover and bleeding over into these areas, but this is our, how we're going to build our outreach plan, based on business intelligence. We know these students are, have earned this many credit hours, so we're going to implement this piece of the puzzle. The middle part, we're going to implement, and so on and so forth. So we'll have an outreach plan put together and go forward from there. So do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
The, so what are the next steps? We want to be sure that we coordinate all of our existing resources in the internship office, and in career services offices, and in our advising offices, into a model that provides end-to-end career services and maximizes the effectiveness of all of those, of all of those areas. We need, and we're going to, and we've started the process of collaborating with the deans, the program directors, and the lead instructors. We want to make sure that job preparation is, activities are articulated throughout the curriculum. As you know, most of our baccalaureate programs have capstone courses, and we expect to be much more active in those courses, working with students as they get to that, that end of the baccalaureate program process. We want to broaden the scope, and really, it's part of their scope, but we want to strengthen the focus of our advisory committees, so that they include internships and employment opportunities, and we include those in our discussions with those advisory committees for our AS and BS programs. And we want to improve the visibility and awareness of career services. I think, as Jason mentioned, we want to make sure that we have career services as unavoidable, that the student sees them physically on our sites, so there's some intention to actually modify facilities so that students can't miss career services as they come by our sites, and also that we design a strong communication plan, a robust website, and social media presence to, again, communicate with students the importance and the fact that these services are not only available, but using that proactive mode, that we're going to continually touch base with students and continually work with them throughout those series of time periods that Jason mentioned, credit hour periods, so that we will make sure that they're moving along to make those decisions.
Oops, sorry. There's one tool that we've been exploring to help students understand the labor market and how SPC programs are connected to the jobs in our labor market. And one of the latest tools on the market, designed by a company called Burning Glass, and it's called a Career Explorer. And it uses leading-edge artificial intelligence to help students create personalized job matches from a database of millions of jobs across the internet. Students can enter their current or previous jobs and see a list of transferable skills and related occupations, and also the SPC programs associated with the training that they might need to get into those occupations. Veterans can also get the same results by simply entering in their military occupational specialty code. So it pulls all the skill sets from those job titles, starts creating a resume for them based on the skill sets that were required for that job. So this is another tool on top of our focus tool, Career Assessment. It is perhaps something that could replace Optimal Resume because of the sophisticated resume builder system it has, and it's also another job board for students to be able to search and find local employment opportunities, trends, salary information. And then, lastly, we're certainly going to provide extensive training to staff to learn these new tools and the approach to career services on this end-to-end service model.
Any questions?
More members? I have a few myself, so go ahead.
Do we try, I'm sure we do, is the answer. What percentage of our four-year, of our four-year graduates go on to graduate school?
I don't know that number. I do not have that information. We'll have to get that information for you. I'm sure that that information exists, but we don't. One of the things that we want to do with this transition services is, is the, all the analytics about placement. I don't work with that directly, and I'm sure there's somebody behind me that does, Dr. Law, I mentioned it, but there's a, there's a instrument called FETPip. It's been around forever. And FETPip provides data on a number of folks that go to graduate school and into the military and onto, onto further education. But the data's two years old, and I never found it to be terribly helpful. Not only was it dated, but it didn't measure out of state students.
Right.
So, Dr. Law?
No, I want to be very careful, though, to be sure we answer your question as best we can. Most of our baccalaureate degrees are intended to put people right into work. They're not intended to go on for further study. Now, you can do that, I don't suppose somebody getting a Bachelor's Science in Nursing automatically says that's the end of the line, but our purpose is to get them the bachelor's degree. Same thing with teacher ed credentials, same thing with the law enforcement credentials. So I just want to be careful that that's not a metric that we have held as a high-value metric, okay?
Understand, but what I would like to have as a board member is, is when I'm talking to somebody, I'll give you an example. Last night, I was talking to a mom. Her son is going to, when he graduates this year, he's going to come to St. Pete College. And as I'm trying to talk to them, I'm trying to, she says, well, he wants to go to graduate school. I'd like to be able to say, well, not only in addition to our four-year program, X percentage of our kids, our students go on to graduate school, and X percentage of our nurses who graduate have jobs, and X percentage, her daughter's already in our teaching program, you know, X percentage have jobs upon graduation. And those numbers, while I realize, highly oversimplified, I really do, I understand that, but that's how you sell it.
Some, we have pretty good shape. We have the best available numbers. Nobody's going to have better numbers. I've not done the tracking for, say, AA students who go on to USF or Florida, and then on to that. I see my guys scurrying around here, okay? They love this sort of challenge. But let us, let us see if we can't get you good information on students who transfer and then go on, okay? That's available. We can track anyone in the university system.
May even have it here. We have some master's programs.
Jesse, do you?
I have a couple of numbers you can share if you'd like.
Jesse, come out.
There may not be, and answer your question, but we've got some numbers, okay?
We always have numbers, so, okay.
Juan had just pulled this for me real quickly, but the FETPip information, there's actually some informations that, that's, there's a Smart College Choices website.
Now, is that our, is that our data, or is that just?
This is state data. And with any set of data, I'm going to share, there's, of course, layers of nuances that have to be expressed, and I won't get into a lot of the details, but this is basically data that the state collects on folks that are still in the state of Florida.
Okay.
So the information they're using is based on, it's based on unemployment information that's paid by businesses.
Got it.
So if you graduate and then go on out of the state, you're not in this pool anymore.
Got it.
So using the total number of our graduates divided by those the state can actually find that are employed.
Got it.
And employed in field.
Right.
Our rate of employment is 79%.
Okay.
For our graduates, and this is as of our baccalaureate graduates in 10-11.
So 10-11.
10-11. So if you actually take into account that information for those graduates that would be, that then went out of state to be employed, which we have a number of online baccalaureate programs, that would be the case there, as well as those that are in any type of self-employment kind of situation, that percentage is high. So the 79 I'm giving you is a very conservative number in that sense. In terms of those presenting continuing education, this goes along with what Dr. Law mentioned in terms of the intent of our baccalaureate degrees is workforce.
Right.
It's about 14%.
That's still pretty high, though, considering that we're putting people out there to get jobs. The reason, the whole reason I ask is that when we went to the Dennis Jones, the Dennis Jones Dinner, I was chatting with, we had two tables there of students, and I was chatting with them, and I would tell you that probably 80% said they were going on to graduate school. And that's what made me start thinking about, well, how many kids do we have going on? Students do we have going on to graduate school? That was the only reason for that, because it seemed like a very high number to me.
Some of us live for these moments. You have in front of you an answer to your question, okay? This is the Smart College Choices website through the Department of Education. Pull down menus, so we can get, College View would be St. Petersburg College, obviously. There you go. And Program, pick the one you want, pick, oh, there's a separate thing for bachelor's degrees, but do the Associate in Arts degree, do we have Associate in Arts? Or is it just Associate in Science? Oh, Associate in Arts, it's own pull-down menu in the top there, across the top. You see where it is here? Okay. And let's see. 63% employed, 30%, 70% continuing their education. Here's what happens. It finds anyone who left us who's in the university system, anyone who left us who's in the Florida Department of Labor database, that's how we know who's employed. Notice employed could be in a field, you could be a barista, okay? That's part of the problem. You show up in the Department of Labor database. Or if you're out of state, though, you're not included, but, so let's go, do the bachelor's degrees are always interesting, because those tend to track a little closer.
And the Associate of Arts intent isn't workforce. The Associate of Arts' specific intent is we're transferring to either our programs or to the university.
If you look at this one, the numbers, of course, are higher and better. Heaven forbid, the state wouldn't want more bachelor's degrees, you know, why would we want more people earning $58,000 or $66,000? We wouldn't want that to happen. $61,000 in public safety. So we track these, people who are in the workforce-related areas, we track those really pretty well, as well as can be done. There's some limits to it. It doesn't include everybody who's out of state, so our Vet Tech program has a national reputation. If you signed up from West Virginia, you're not in the, we don't know if you're working or not. But then the transferability into the university system, we know those numbers. I don't, I just don't know about going into graduate school, though. Let us get a good answer on that. I just haven't, if they're in the university system, we can find them, though.
Correct. Got any more questions, Ms. Weston?
Here's, here's, it was a good question. I didn't want to lose the focus here. Jason mentioned point. One of the tools we're looking at can sort who got hired in, pick the area, Bay Area, Pinellas County, zip code if you want, and not just by job title, but by job skills from the resumes of the people who were hired. And that can get sorted, then, which I think is much more helpful data to give a student as they're talking about what can do. It can, for a very modest fee, I think we're going to sign up with these guys, they'll crosswalk our majors to job titles, but then you can sort the job titles to find out what skill sets are included. So you do that. Secondly, then, it allows you to build the other way. If you get an internship, it says, what did you do during that internship? And you list the skills that you worked on, rather than simply have a thing that says internship, Tampa Bay Business Journal, you know, you can list your skills, and those can show up on a resume for you. So we think it's a very powerful tool to understand who's really getting hired and what's the nuance in the market, not just by title. So we think we can do that. We had a webinar with them, and it's very modest, I suspect, we may do this without even, wait until next year, it's just not that big a deal for us, but it's a very powerful tool. You asked us to have door-to-door services for students in the career area. We know the front door, we're doing a pretty good job there, I'm very pleased with that piece. You hear us spending a good part of our effort saying, how does it transit? And what's the exit strategy for students to be supported in their jobs? So that's what we're working on, and that's what you'll see in the budget recommendations to you this year. Mr. Chairman?
Any more?
Yes. Speaking of being an intern at the Tampa Bay Business Journal, you guys mentioned internships. I'm just curious, as a company, based on what happened last year with that big internship debacle, we are no longer allowed to have them. Is that affecting us in general as a college, or do you see a reduction in people interested in bringing in interns anymore?
We have not, no, internship, we have not, there's been a big debacle with paid versus non. non-paid, so most of, we have seen a lot more paid internships than non-paid. Department of Labor rules and regulations behind not paying interns. So is that what you're saying, is you're not allowed to have any interns?
No, we're allowed to pay, we're allowed to have paid interns. However, we also have a budget, like the college does. They weren't in there, so, I mean, it has had a serious effect on my business, so I was just curious. I mean, it worried me from the standpoint of how are they going to get those skills if there is, but you're not seeing a decrease.
We haven't seen anything, yeah, hopefully we won't.
No, and the student demand for internships is way up. Not just, we started with a smaller group of associate in science programs as well. Now we're seeing more AA programs, psychology, for example, interested in having internships. So we expect to see that whole area expand, conscious of what you're saying.
Any more questions, board members? Dr. Law? Dr. Oliver and Dr. Crepp, thank you so much for bringing this forward. I think, Dr. Law, I kind of agree with Ms. Weston. I see this as a recruiting mechanism.
Oh, yeah.
Because I think you're right. We have gotten the front door cleaned up, we're student-centered, and you and I know the expert on the back part of this, we just didn't, I didn't know we were doing this, but I knew you had started the process, but I didn't know how far we got along. But nobody, gentlemen, does, has done this better, she's no longer there, but Dr. Law knows her well, and I know her, than the lady at SBI, Dr. Sybil.
Sybil Mobley.
Mobley. At FAMU. And let me tell you, you talk about internships, you talk about getting placements for jobs, she did it. Am I right, Dr. Law?
Amen.
I mean, nobody did it better than her. I'm glad to see that we're on our way, but I really would, I want to make sure that we get it right. I don't know, you guys talked to Dr. Law, and y'all talked through it, but I don't know if she's available to tell you how she, maybe we can get a roadmap of how she did some of that, but she got it right. I mean, you talk about placements, and you talk about internships, she had every corporation, and major corporation in the country, fighting over her students coming out of that SBI business program at FAMU. And I'm going to just tell you, I think this is important, because when we start recruiting folks to come in the front door, if they see people leaving here and they see corporations coming here, fighting to get our students, they're going to come here, they're going to be successful here. They're going to be successful, because we are, we're focused on the student, and we can get them through. The issue is when they get out, we need to be able to put them out, so they're not a barista. He's right. I mean, you know, we need to be making sure that when they leave here in nursing, the hospital, every hospital in the state is here looking for our nursing graduates. Every person is looking for our technology graduates, every company that, you know, we need to have the Microsofts, the Ebays. And I'm being serious about this, because the classroom is no longer four walls. It is, you know, it's interactive, and you can do anything from anywhere. So we need to make sure that these corporations understand that we're putting out the best product, because I really believe that we are. I think if you look statewide, you know, I would argue with anybody. I was down in Broward County this week, and I was talking to some city council members, and, you know, they're amazed at what we do with baccalaureate programs. I mean, they have them down there, but they're not doing what we're doing. And I talked to them about online stuff. So I'm just saying to you, Dr. Sybil knew what she was doing, she had a roadmap. Maybe we talk to her just to see what was, how did she get them involved in the process? Because I'm, she got every, I don't, I've never seen anybody get corporations coming to colleges, you know? I have plenty of friends that are still working for major corporations that went through that SBI program. I think this is a good start, and it looks similar to probably what her outputs and how she got folks there. But I would be interested to know what she did to get corporations to come to the campus, Dr. Law.
Let's see what we can do.
Would you agree on that?
Oh, I mean.
You see me smile? She didn't leave people guessing about what was expected when we went into the world of work. You could tell Tuesdays was dress-up day on FAMU's campus, and everybody who was in that program had business attire on all day. And these were at times when it wasn't, business attire was hard to spot anywhere on college campus, much less students. Very impressive with what they've done there. We're focused, we, you've given us good guidance as to how to move our thinking along to the comprehensiveness of what we're doing. Stick with us, we'll, you'll see it unfold over the next couple of months, and you should then see us execute your vision for this, so.
Great job, gentlemen. Thank you so much.
Nice one.
I love it when we have the numbers and we can answer questions.
That's right. We're on to our budget and finance portion, Dr. Duncan is.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're at that point in the year where we're starting to see a little shift in the trend line. You can see a little narrowing now between revenue and expense. You may recall, I mentioned last month that we've been gradually building a surplus over the year, and I think last month it was at 8.6 million. And you'll see, I highlighted at the bottom just to illustrate that we burned 4 million of that in one month. So we're down to 4.7 million. And we will, we will continue to see that, we've received about 80% of our tuition at this point, so that's, we're not going to be seeing much more of that. We're still, really, as I said last month, the lottery issue, we've only received about 30% of it. So we'll continue to see that narrow, and how narrow will simply be a factor of when we receive the rest of the lottery funding from the state. But otherwise, we will, from now to the end of the year, we will also watch spending very closely, we always do, to make sure we keep it in line with revenue. Any questions?
No questions. Do we want to report for the, excuse me, for the personnel report, or do we just want to take up a motion?
I think we take this motion. Oh, there's an information item there, though, Mr. Chairman, that I want to take a second on.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, just so you hear it from us, if you would. Patty, are you going to handle this item for us? Nothing is easy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Patty Jones, Vice President of Human Resources, and I just want to take a couple of minutes to update you on changes to our pay cycle that we plan to implement in the new fiscal year, only for our administrative and professional employees. Currently, employees are paid bi-weekly, they're paid every other week. For AMP employees, at the end of the fiscal year, which is their contract year, their gross amount of pay should equal their annual contracted salary. Well, starting in 2010-11, some shifts in the calendar, as you can see, meant that the last pay happened in the middle of the month, the final month of fiscal year. So that is continued every year. So our plan to solve that is a new pay cycle, again, only for our administrative and professional employees, that will go to a semi-monthly pay schedule, will be the middle and end of the month. However, to cushion the impact for them, we're planning on a transition year, so they're not going from mid-June to mid-July to wait for a paycheck. So for the transition year, they would actually have 25 pays, with the transition pay being July 1st, only a few working days after their, what would have been the last pay in June. And then henceforth, the new cycle of 24 pays will be in effect for 2015-16.
So instead of getting paid on June 28th, you'll get paid on July 1st. And from that point on, you're on a two-week schedule. Here's the real problem. We could keep doing this, kind of cutting the blanket one end, sewing it to the other. Eventually, you're going to have to sew two pay periods on, at which point you'll get an audit criticism. You'll be, you'll actually be paying people in a year they didn't earn the money, and it's better to just fix it. We've got this one window of opportunity here to make it as seamless as possible. The paycheck on July 1st is bigger than the paycheck you would have gotten on June 28th, and of course, then the next year, you get 24 paychecks instead of 26 paychecks, and each of those is benefit. We think there's enough lead time for everybody to do it. When you play with people's pay, you need to be very careful and patient to explain what's happening, okay? But it's simply an audit-type issue. I think that lays it out pretty well.
Mr. Chairman, do I hear a motion?
No, we don't need a motion on this, this is administrative matter, but what happens is, once we do it, when you get a phone call, somebody says, hey, my paycheck got screwed up, okay? You understand, it didn't get screwed up, it's part of a plan.
Do we have any questions on this one?
No, just, my only request would be is that we tell people, we tell people, we tell people, and then we tell them again. Because while we don't think having a year to plan for this is enough.
In fact, we will, after today, we'll go ahead and simulate what your July 1 check would entail, so that you'll see all of your deductions, you'll see all of how much you're going to get. It'll be slightly bigger, it's 25 pays instead of 26, but we'll simulate, here's what you're going to get, so not on June 28th, but on July 1st. So we'll give everybody all the information they have. Small thing, but I, I'm always nervous that people get, I understand their concern about that.
So you get to see your check, Ms. Weston? What you're going to get, being on the board. So I have to explain to my wife, when the check isn't there on Friday, I have to be able to answer questions for my wife, that's the way the money went, okay?
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of your personnel report.
Is there a second in that?
Second.
All signify, I mean, I'm sorry, there's a properly moved in second. Are there any questions? All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On opposing, we're down to the construction. This one, I know we're going to explain a little bit.
Yep.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Law. I'm here to, we are seeking approval this morning for both the 100% construction drawings as well as the guaranteed maximum price for the Midtown project. I want to provide just a bit of a framework for the events over the past few months, so you can completely understand how we got to where we are today. Back in September, the board approved the selection of Lima Construction as the CM at risk for this project. As we know, that took a little longer than we would have hoped. A result of that delay was that Lima did not get a chance to perform what's called their pre-construction services, which is generally the period in which a lot of the cost estimating occurs. We were anxious to get started, they were anxious to get started, but we didn't have a GMP. So what, the way we alleviated that challenge was this board, at its November meeting, authorized Dr. Law to approve the early packages that were necessary to get us started, allow the project to commence and roll forward, while Lima was taking time to do their due diligence and produce this GMP. So through that authorization, Dr. Law approved a $1.325 million worth of early packages, including the site development work, the concrete masonry, which you see in the photographs, as well as the structural steel, which was the last part of the critical path items that were necessary to bring us to today without losing schedule. So now we have the guaranteed maximum price, $12.8 million, just a little less than that. It's within budget, the project is on schedule. Once we have this approval, we'll go ahead and issue the, all the purchase orders necessary to keep the project moving forward. I think that summarizes it as best I can.
Just, Dr. Law, for the record, what is the guaranteed maximum price? Jim, go through that for us, and how that's been set, and also what are some of the things that have been approved? I just want that for the record, to make sure that.
And is that 1.3 that's already been authorized included in that 12.7?
The answer is absolutely yes.
It is, okay.
It is included in that.
What item is, I'm sorry.
D2. D2A, yeah.
The number is.
Go ahead.
Is that what you're looking for?
No, go ahead.
The number is $12,798,226.
Is the guaranteed maximum price?
Is the guaranteed maximum price. Now, the other advantage that we've been able to achieve is a lot of the subcontract packages have actually been advertised now, and the contracts are ready to be signed and awarded. So this number is rock solid. There's very little contingency money in there, we have enough to make us comfortable, but not enough to call any kind of surplus or anything. I would say between 80 and 90% of those subcontracts have been vetted, so we are very, very comfortable with this number, because they're based on facts, advertised subcontract awards.
Board members, any questions? The 1.35 million is included in that. Where the contracts that have been awarded, do we know what the minority numbers look like yet?
Our goal is 30% BCI, and through the process, at each and every turn, we look at that. And in Lima, we're looking at low bid, obviously, and we're looking at BCI. It's not just one or just the other, and we have, we have come, we've been approached several times by Lima, said, here's the conundrum. We've got this, but we've got this, this guy's got a better BCI, this guy's got a little better price, and we've made judicious calls on the awards of those. We're achieving the 30% so far, with all those subcontracts that are ready to be awarded, we feel like we'll be right there.
Good, I'm glad to hear you're involved in that, thanks. Thank you, Dr. Law. Any questions?
Need a motion on this one, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, a motion to approve item D2A.
So moved.
It's been properly moved a second, any questions or discussion? All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing, we are on to the consent agenda. I don't see anything here.
You can take a motion for the entire consent.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, Dr. Law. Do I hear a motion to accept the entire consent agenda?
You do.
Second.
Any discussion? All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are down to informational reports. There are none, so I will open the public hearing. And there are no, are any public speakers? None. I will close the public hearing, and we're down to the president's report.
Mr. Chairman, I, my notes were simply to be sure to highlight for you the 20, the shift to 24 pays, the fact that we are working in Tallahassee. We will give you an update next month. I think, I don't have any other items that need attention today, okay? Thank you. There is an item from a member of the board next, I want to be sure we didn't close off too fast.
No, no, I got her.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Law, one thing.
Please.
Did I hear we came in second place in basketball in state? Is that what they said today?
We did. We, well, Tanja, help me out here. Men finished second, they played for the championship. It doesn't feel good to come in second, but it feels better than going all the way to Chipola and coming in second. So the games are now over in Ocala, and it makes you feel a little bit better about the quality of the game, and then.
I was going to ask, this next meeting, we could recognize, the young men that could come, we should recognize them, they, I mean, they played in the championship game, that's pretty, that's pretty good.
We'll make that invitation.
Yes.
Okay, there, I'm very proud of our coaches, they have done a really good job. In fact, we'll tee up an item to give you all the background, but Mark has great numbers on the academic success of our students, how many students stayed with it, we've lost very few. They have worked on the character issues, our teams make civic contributions, they just represent us so well now, I'm so proud of them. And guess what happens? They play better.
Yeah.
Funny how that works, huh?
Invest it. I would say to the board members, you know, we, you know, Mr. Brett used to do this when he was chair. If you, well, the season's over, but any sport, you guys want to go to a game, we can go and watch.
I actually just emailed Laura, emailed Laura during the meeting, if she'll send me the home schedule of all our sports, because.
And we can, we can go. All right. So our next meeting date is April 15th here at the Epi Center. If there's no other business, but we. I didn't forget, if there's no other business, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Weston.
I would respectfully request that meetings start at 9:00 AM. I have an eight-year-old to get ready for school, and way too many animals to feed in the morning, and that half hour would mean the world to me.
Board members?
I have checked with folks, and it does not seem to be a major issue for anyone.
As long as the rest of the board is fine with it, I'm fine with it, I mean.